Okay. The Board of Director Midwifery Meeting is convening at 9:39 a.m. on June 25th, 2021, at the Health Licensing Office in Salem by telephone conference call. I will now call roll. Meredith Klein, absent. Beth Iva?
Aye.
Wendy Smith? Absent. Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone?
Aye.
And Meredith Mans?
I think she's on the line right now.
Oh, is she logging in right now?
I think so. I think this is her.
Might be her.
I don't have a number for her.
But we don't have a number listed for her.
It's Meredith, man.
Oh, good morning, Meredith. We're just getting started.
Hi, I'm Meredith.
It's all right. Members, when you wish to speak, please state your last name for the record. For the record, public members calling into the public phone line are asked to email April Fleming and april.fleming@ghsoha.state.or.us and provide your first and last name. Public interested parties' feedback may be heard during the public interested parties' feedback period if it is indicated on the agenda. Everyone is asked to use appropriate language, manners, and protocols when conducting board business. This meeting is now called to order. So your first action item is to approve a chairperson for today's meeting. I nominate Kelsey as the woman.
It's Christine, a second.
This is Kelsey, and I can be the chairperson, but I'm currently driving, so it's not counted up to three. This is Beth. I am not in front of my computer right now either. I'm driving into work.
I am not in front of a computer either, so I can't get access to whatever script. All right, that leaves me. Well, Matt, you can send it to me. I'll do it.
So we still need an official, so somebody needs to make a motion to elect Lynette to be the chair for this meeting, second, and then I'll do the roll call.
This is Kelsey. And I nominate Lynette to be the chairperson. This is Kelsey, I second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to make Lynette the chair for today. I'll call roll. Beth?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Kelsey?
Aye.
Meredith Mans?
Aye.
And Lynette?
Aye.
All right, Lynette, so you should be getting an email here shortly from April.
This is Kelsey. I'm guessing we have an agenda since it's a board meeting, right?
Correct. So that's her next item is to approve the agenda.
Okay. This is Kelsey, and I move to approve the agenda.
Did you send it?
This is Christine, a second.
And then Lynette, I don't know if you've gotten the script yet, but you just have to call roll and everybody individually votes, including yourself, and you don't have to call people who are not here.
I'm just pointing it out. Okay, so I will call roll. Meredith Klein, absent. Beth Iva?
Aye.
Wendy Smith? Absent. Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone? Aye. And Meredith Mans?
Aye.
Meredith, either yea or nay on approval of the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Aye.
It's okay.
So we see the agenda is approved, and we move to the next segment of business.
Correct. So the next one is about the supervisors. So the reason that we tried to rush this meeting is because we found out, and she has asked for the approvals to be able to start working come July 1, so we couldn't wait or didn't want to wait to give her some approval. We'll kind of go through that. And hopefully you've read through the information that we got. We added to the response that we got regarding why she chose some people who were in Portland, and that's where she wants to relocate for the summer and start working. So that was kind of the rush. But you guys go ahead and have your conversations about the different supervisors, and then we'll let her know what you guys decide.
Where would I find that information? I don't know that I received it in advance.
Can you guys share it? Like, share the screen of it? Sorry.
Bob, can you bring it up and share the screen? That's fine. So we can go through, and I can verbalize it, especially for the people who are driving. So we've got Willa. She's currently licensed and active through November 30th through 21. She's been licensed since 2015. She's located in Grants Pass. She has no disciplinary action. She's got four, I believe, four individuals from Grants Pass. The other one, next one, is Amy. She's currently licensed, has been licensed since 2011, no disciplinary action. The other one is Megan Pratt. Currently licensed, has only been licensed since 21, and this is where she added some additional information. It says Megan Pratt began working as an apprentice midwife with Willa and Amy in 2015. She never practiced outside of her supervision or practiced, and has never worked in another state. During her six years of experience with us, she has attended, assisted, and now been primary on hundreds of births, including prenatal, postpartum care, and Megan is a paramount to our training and our student apprentices, and has daily involvement with them. Since being licensed by the state, Megan has also been able to update her NARM preceptor registration. So that was one that I know you guys had some concerns with because she hadn't been licensed for very long. Next person from Grants Pass is Shawna. Shawna is currently licensed, has been licensed since 2009, has no disciplinary action. And then she picked two from the Portland area, and this is where you guys wanted some more information. So Carrie Duncan and Megan Koppak. Both currently licensed. Carrie's since 2004, Megan's since 2016. Neither one of them have disciplinary action. And then here's some additional information that we got. Ms. Rowan's choice of proposed supervisors is driven by the parameters of the settlement, specifically the requirement that the supervisor should not be someone with whom Rowan has worked in the past. Because Ms. Rowan has been a midwife in the Rogue Valley for several years, she has worked with most of the midwives in that area at one point or another. The only midwives who Ms. Rowan has located in Southern Oregon who would meet the requirements for the settlement are the Rogue Birth Center. They will not have space to support supervised practice until January of '22. The only midwives in Southern Oregon who haven't worked with Ms. Rowan in the past are the newer midwives, like Ms. Pratt. Although it is inevitable that Ms. Rowan's supervision will have less experience than she does, Ms. Rowan's supervisors will have less experience than she does, Ms. Rowan has every intention of cooperating with their oversight and supervision. Ms. Rowan was also able to locate two midwives in Portland, Carrie Duncan and Megan Koppak, who have the capacity to supervise her practice this summer and who meet the supervisor requirements of the settlement. Ms. Rowan will relocate to Portland at her own expense for the summer in order to start fulfilling the requirements of the settlement. Her hope and intention is to start on July 1. And that's all the info I have.
So this is Lynette, and I continue to have concerns about the length of practice of Amy, although it's reassuring to know that she works as part of a practice with other midwives. And I also continue to have concerns about the Portland relocation. I worked with Carrie and Megan. They work at Ondaloo's Waterford Center in Portland, and there are other midwives there as well, and so I'm not sure what the logistics of that would look like, but it seems like typically their requirement at births is that they have two students and a midwife at every birth, and the midwives all share call, so it could end up that it would be a different midwife at a birth that she would be scheduled to go with. There are three other midwives in that practice.
This is Meredith Mans. I agree with kind of the logistic issues. I think we need a little clarity on what that would look like, because I wouldn't want to be in a position where she's just, like, if she's in a group practice and someone else gets called in, it's Carrie or whoever just signing off, you know? Like, I think we need some assurance. I also have, I don't have any experience with Carrie, but I do know we're working on a pretty big case for her, and that makes me a little nervous as well.
I agree with what both of you guys have said. I also agree, I think the one who was recently licensed is a little too new to be supervising, and I think the power dynamic would probably be, make it difficult to be a really objective supervisor of somebody. I mean, I don't know. That's just my feeling.
The other thing that comes up for me, this is Lynette, is that I thought maybe we didn't specify it clearly, but we had intended there to be continuity of care. Like, we didn't intend for her just to go into a birth center and catch a bunch of babies under supervision. We intended her to have a practice over time, you know, to take care of people throughout the continuity of their pregnancy, labor, and delivery, and postpartum, under supervision, and a summer-long practice in Portland doesn't necessarily meet that intention.
I agree. I think also, I think with the continuity of care, that was, you know, hoping that she would be able to identify, like, increasing risk factors as time goes on, and I think that you get that from continuity of care versus, I agree, just like showing up and catching a baby.
This is Meredith Mans. I agree with this concern.
This is Kelsey, and I want to say that, like, what we outlined was, you know, re-fulfilling the NARM requirements, which do include continuity of care, but there's also, like, an observation and an assist phase, and it sounds like the relocation to Portland is because there's no one available in Southern Oregon until next year, and we also did put a timeline that this has to be completed. So I understand, like, if there is a move for a sense of urgency. I do share the concern about if, you know, you just have one midwife supervisor at a birth center, that's not really how those practices operate, and I think that that is a reason to approve Megan Pratt as a preceptor in Southern Oregon, because then we'd be approving, to my understanding, all of the midwives in that practice, so that there would be, you know, more experienced oversight, but that, you know, if Megan's the one on call to go to a birth, that that wouldn't cause a delay.
This is Meredith Mans. I will say I've worked in a similar setup for a center when I was in the position that Megan is in, when I was less experienced, and you do get a lot of general, when you're in a busy group practice like that, typically, at least in my experience, there was a little bit more oversight overall, like, a lot more chart reviews, a lot more eyes on your charts and eyes on your care and things like that, so I think that is something we can kind of consider, that she's not just, like, doing home births out with less experienced midwives. But I do understand the power dynamic issue too, but generally speaking, if it's part of a bigger, busy group practice, there should, there would likely be more general oversight than just the less experienced midwives, if that makes sense.
I'm wondering if there is a way, if it's fair or not, or if it meets the language that we have previously used, to be able to specify that the less experienced than that midwife couldn't be the supervisor out of birth. I know that for myself, and for the major MICA accredited schools, even Birthing Way and Breastier and others, that the midwife needs to be licensed for three years before becoming a birth preceptor, and that a preceptor could be approved for clinic, but not first.
Is this really accepted, though, based on number of births? Like, I think it's three years or a certain number of births.
Yeah, that's for NARM. It's three years or 25 primaries after your certification. I don't know if the schools go by that, though.
I know, I know this to you, but that's the only one coming to mind, that I think they do the number requirement. It's just a higher number than NARM.
That's my recollection as well, Meredith, is that there is a number, but it's, like, 50 instead of 25.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that we necessarily need to, like, try to change any of the terms that have already been agreed to. It's just that there's a caveat that all the supervisors are board-approved, so I think that that just leaves it to us, like, to interpret the nuance and then approve or not approve based on our, you know, our decision. So I think that we can choose to approve or not approve any of these midwives. I don't know that we necessarily need to try to go back and change anything.
I agree. I think we can just, you know, decide if we, I mean, I guess we can just give a reason or just not approve the ones we are not approving.
Yeah, I feel like we could just go down the list and say yes or no, right? Like, we can give that back to her, and if she wants to add more to it, she can come back to us, right?
This is Lynette, though, and I still feel like we need more information about the Carrie-Megan situation in Portland, because there are more midwives in that practice.
Well, I agree. I agree with Meredith's concern about the, because I agree, I think we do have an open case or an open, I can't remember what it is.
Well, I think that, so, so none of these midwives have any disciplinary action against them, but if you look through all the notices of action or, like, the final orders for things, you know, even if these midwives don't have any complaints, there have been a lot of complaints from midwives at Ondaloo. Like, it's a fairly high proportion, and so I think that that is something that we can factor into our decision-making, even if, because, like, has been mentioned, it's not just, you know, one midwife that you're working with when you're at a birth center like that.
And we have, I know we have concerns about the power dynamic issue also, and I think that we've had that conversation about the birth center itself previously, in previous places, you know? And my bigger concern about Carrie is that the complaint open against her right now is.
So we want to make sure that we're not talking about any complaints or investigations that are open in our public session.
Got it.
So if it would be helpful, I have the settlement agreement up that talks about the things that she has to do. She is required to, even under a supervisor who's working in a larger practice, to fulfill the requirements of the settlement under the supervisor. So it's only the supervisors who are approved that she can be under supervision of, regardless of the practice. So if she, that would be on her to fulfill the settlement agreements per the terms, per the terms, with the approved supervisor, regardless of what type of practice it's in. And do we have a chart review requirement as well? I can't remember. So we have an educational requirement. We talk about if a supervisor no longer meets the requirements, what needs to happen. She has to do 75 clinicals as an assistant under supervision using NARM entry-level portfolio evaluation process. That's the process that she has to use. She has to do 145 clinicals as a primary under supervision. 10 of the 50 deliveries must be deliveries for which respondent provided continuity of care. We do not have the charting. There wasn't a review of charts, but if the, there is a requirement that she provide more information to the board and cooperate with the board with any request for information, so if the board has concerns that there were births that she was attending that was not under a supervisor or that it was not pursuant to the NARM process that's incorporated into the settlement, then you could ask for more information, review those charts, make sure that the births that she has submitted for the settlement are actually births that correspond with all of the requirements under the settlement. So you could always ask for charts to verify. I would lean that direction for births that occur at Ondaloo's, to verify that one of these were her supervisor.
Do we want to approve these ones, though, at Ondaloo's? Because I agree with what Meredith was saying in terms of her concerns.
I think that that's a difficult question, because as Kelsey pointed out earlier, this is how she gets started sooner than having to wait till the first of the year.
Well, I mean, I agree, but I think our, like, role is to be, act in the best interest of the community and what is going to be the safest long-term outcome, not just helping her to get relicensed.
I agree, and I'm trying to remember, Kelsey had also mentioned we put a timeline. Is it the three years? Is that what we gave her?
Yeah. She can ask for extensions. She has to come to the board, though, for that.
Yeah, this is Meredith Mans. Now that I'm, like, rethinking that and hearing that again, I'm not sure that it's our job to help her meet that timeline if we're uncomfortable with any of what we were, you know? Like, that burden is on her, I think.
I agree.
So does anyone want to provide more comment, or should we take a straw poll, starting at the top of the list, on who to approve and disapprove?
I'm up for a straw poll.
Yeah, agreed.
So I can't see the whole list. So if either the admin people can make it smaller so we can see the whole list or read the list, that would be great.
Willa's at the top. Willa Woodward-Urbin. We can start there.
Great. Anyone have any concerns about Willa? Yea or nay? I'm sorry, I'm not good at being as the facilitator here.
You're doing great. I don't think that I have any clinical concern about Willa, Willa's capacity to supervise. I just know that she's very busy. But I also think that it makes sense to approve all of the possible supervisors at one birth center, so I support Willa as a preceptor.
Great. Christine, do you support Willa as a preceptor?
Yes.
Meredith? Any additional comment, or do you, and do you support Willa as a preceptor?
I support Willa as a preceptor.
And Beth?
Yes.
Great. Who's next on the list? Amy? Kelsey, thoughts about Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I think similar. I know that she works with Willa, not much, quite a bit of experience. I think it's a pretty busy practice, but I know that they are, they do take students. Yeah, I support Amy as a preceptor.
Great. And Christine, do you support Amy?
Yes.
And Meredith, do you support Amy?
Yes, I do.
And Beth? Do you support her?
Yeah.
Great. Next on the list is Megan Pratt, and she's the one that has less experience. Am I correct? No? Yes?
Yeah, she's only been licensed for...
Are you?
A little bit. Yeah. I think that I do still support her, because I think that it makes sense to have, like, the entire team at a birth center approved, and it sounds like she does have more experience than other people might at that phase of practice, and also is working, you know, with more experienced midwives, so I do support approving Megan.
Great. Meredith, do you support approving Megan?
I actually do. I agree with what Kelsey said, that in the context of a busy practice and having the births behind her, that I would, I'm okay with that.
Great. And Christine?
I don't, I just think that she's too new to her own practice to really be acting as a preceptor for anyone. In our practice, when we have students, we don't put them with newer midwives, just because it's, you're just kind of getting your feet on the ground in your own practice. So that's my, I don't approve of her.
Great. And Beth, do you support Megan Pratt as a preceptor?
Yes.
And Shawna? Any thoughts on Shawna as a preceptor? Kelsey?
Lynette, did you, did you say if you support Megan or not? I'm just thinking if we need to, like, vote separately.
Great. I would probably support her, and as a compromise, I would suggest what I had proposed earlier, which is that we approve her for clinic and not for birth. But I will defer to Heather for what kind of a, do we just need a majority? Do we need, what do we need to do to approve a preceptor?
So to approve, you'll need to take a vote and have the majority of the board agree with that vote, and so what, it sounds to me like what you're doing is doing a straw poll, see where people land, and then you can categorize them as, these ones, it seems like we can approve wholesale, these ones, we need to vote on individually, and then you'll be able to see where the board lands.
Correct. So back to Shawna. Kelsey, do you have lots of concerns with Shawna? Do you support her as a preceptor?
I don't really know her or know much about her, but she's...
But she's been licensed for, you know, longer than I... She was licensed when I started with her preschool. So that seems like she has probably a lot of experience. And I don't have any more knowledge to have any concerns. So I do support Shawna.
Does anyone know if she's at... We're at birth center with each other, midwives? No?
I vaguely recall that she has her own practice, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Meredith Mance? Any thoughts or concerns? Do you approve Shawna as a preceptor?
I do approve. I don't see any issues that I'm aware of.
And Christine?
Yeah. No, I don't have any thoughts. I feel like she's reasonable.
Okay. And Beth?
Yes.
You would support Shawna as a preceptor?
Yes.
And Carrie Duncan? Kelsey, would you support her as a preceptor?
I think, given our current understanding of how births work at a busy birth center and the number of notices of intent and final order that have occurred with Ondaloo's midwives, that I am not in support of either Carrie or... It sounds like Megan also at Ondaloo. I'm not in support of approving Ondaloo's preceptors.
Okay. Great. Meredith Mance? Any thoughts or concerns about Carrie? And would you support her as a preceptor?
I do not think that I would approve that option.
Great. Christine?
I... No, I agree with what Kelsey said for the same reasons.
And Beth? Would you approve Carrie and...
I would agree with you guys and not feel comfortable approving anyone from Ondaloo at this point.
Great. So I think the only one we need to go back to potentially is Megan Pratt licensed less than a year.
Yeah, so it sounds like Lynette, you'll be the deciding factor. And I think that we need to defer to Heather with whether we have the capacity to approve someone as a supervisor for clinic, but not for birth.
This is Bob. Did we miss our go-over Megan Kopick?
We ended up lumping her in with Carrie as her...
Okay.
So this is Heather. If the board has concerns about a particular person being a supervisor in some capacity, I think that you can indicate how you're going to approve of her as a capacity. And there's nothing in the settlement agreement that directs that. But she does have to be board-approved. And so if you're only approving her for a particular ability because you don't feel that she has the... For whatever reason, you don't feel that she's the right supervisor for a different capacity, then I think that you could do that. And then if you want further information to be able to approve of her for the other capacity, you could ask for that.
Great, thanks, Heather. Christine, what do you think of the proposal to approve her for clinic and not for birth?
I mean, I just still don't approve. I just don't think that it's... I think she's going to be... As a new midwife, you're typically asking lots of seasoned midwives their opinions about how to manage a patient or how to, you know, about prenatal questions. And so I just don't think she'll have the clinical-based knowledge enough to be a supervisor.
Okay. Anyone else have any suggestions for how to proceed?
Lynette, this is Sylvie. I looked up Shawna.
Yes.
And she works for Nurture'd Roots Midwifery. She has Nurture'd Roots Midwifery. Say that three times back. So she... So most likely, she's not in that same group.
And does she have practice partners? Does it say? Or do they have practice partners?
It's not loading anything.
Okay.
This is Bob. When I was doing the research, I didn't see any partners for Megan. I'm sorry, for Shawna.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? I feel like we can approve most of the list with the exception of Carrie and Megan Ondaloo as we have had quite a bit of discussion on why that might not be the best choice. The one in question is the new midwife, Megan Pratt. It sounds like I'm the tiebreaker. Does anyone else... Any of the other board members have any additional input as to why they feel comfortable approving her? Just because... Is it just because she's part of the birth center group? Or are there any other...
I mean, if she's... She's already has her non-preceptor registration. That means that she's done 25 births as a primary since she completed her CPM, which I feel like often new midwives don't get that, even in their first three years because people often start slower in their practice. So I feel like, you know, if we've asked this licensee to go through the NARM process, essentially, then if she's attained her NARM preceptor registration, then I feel like that's sufficient to me, especially considering, like, how those practices work and how, you know, she won't be exclusively supervised by Megan. That it's... They all work together.
Kelsey, do you have any familiarity with that practice in terms of how they incorporate students into their practice? Do you know if they have two students at every birth or two midwives and one student? Or how they organize that?
I don't have that information, no.
Okay. Well, I think that I'm inclined to support approving her. I do hear Christine's concern, and I do share it to a certain extent. And I hear Kelsey and Meredith feeling more comfortable because of the fact that she's in this group practice and she has additional supervision and she has met the requirements for the NARM certification. And I think that that... I agree that we have set that forth as our benchmark and that we should support that. Should... Yeah. So I think that's the direction that we're leaning. I'm leaning.
So then I recommend that we take three different votes. I think that we could vote on Amy and Lilla together as one vote. And we could vote on Carrie and Megan as another vote. And then we could vote on... Oh, I guess we can put Shawna in with Amy and Lilla. And then we can vote on Megan separately so that people have an opportunity to comment as they're making their vote.
Great. So when we... Do we make our vote here? Or do we need to, like, go into a separate session? Yes, here? Okay.
No, yeah, we're in our agenda item. So I'll just make a motion then. This is Kelsey Fisher, and I move that we approve Lilla Woodward-Ervin, Amy Hendrickson, and Shawna Camily as approved, board-approved supervisors.
This is Meredith Mance, and I second the motion.
Great. Lynette, and I will call roll. Beth, Iva?
Aye.
Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone? Aye. And Meredith Mance?
Aye.
Great. So those three preceptors are approved? Is there another motion?
Yeah, this is Kelsey Fisher, and I move that we vote on whether to approve Carrie Duncan and Megan Kopick as preceptors.
All right, I'll call roll.
So, sorry, this is Heather. Just to clarify, Kelsey, your motion... Is your motion to approve them or is your motion to not approve them? So that we know what we're voting on, sorry.
Oh, I move... Oh, this is confusing because we're all... I move that we do not approve Carrie Duncan and Megan Kopick as preceptors or board-approved supervisors. This is... So if you agree that they should not be approved preceptors, vote aye.
Do we have... I can hear a second.
This is Christine, I second.
Okay. Roll call. Beth, Iva?
Aye.
Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone? Aye. And Meredith Mance?
Aye.
The motion passes. Carrie Duncan and Megan Kopick are not board-approved preceptors.
This is Kelsey Fisher, and I move that we approve Megan Pratt as a board-approved supervisor.
Can someone second?
This is Meredith Mance, and I second the motion.
All right. And I will call roll. Beth, Iva?
Aye.
Christine Morales? I vote no. Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone? Aye. And Meredith Mance?
Aye.
And Megan Pratt is an approved preceptor as the motion has passed. Any other items for business?
This is Sylvie. The only comment I have is that we are pretty sure we're going to cancel the July 8th board meeting. We don't have anything that we need you guys to make decision on. We obviously had this. We were trying to do it before July because she had requested that. We're not to the point where we need to make... Have you guys make any decisions on any cases. So we're going to hopefully cancel the July 8th meeting and then just have you guys meet in August. I'm assuming everybody is okay with that.
Yeah. Yes, that's great.
Okay. We'll make sure... April will make sure and email that out. I know Sammy's listening right now. She was having some computer issues earlier. So we'll get that information out to you about, for sure, canceling it. We'll touch bases with both Trampis and Scott real quick again before we make the final decision to cancel. So that's the only thing I had. Lynette, you should have a script up to adjourn the meeting.
Yes. The Board of Direct Entry members' meeting is adjourned at 10:24 a.m.